Hey everybody, welcome to the Dad Challenge Podcast. My name's Josh. Go Blue Jays. All I have to say, I know yesterday's video wasn't, it was the day before, whatever. I filmed the day after, whatever. Go Blue Jays. This is the first time in thirty two years since I was twelve. They've gone to the World Series and they won back to back nineteen ninety-two, nineteen ninety-three, uh, and has been just blank in our country for thirty-two years and they did it. And I didn't, I honestly believed it. I didn't think we would beat you guys out there in the States. I don't think we would do it. Mariners, it was a good game. It was a good game seven. No, let's be real. Springer with a homerun like almost, almost the same energy in my heart as the Bautista bat flip. And if you go look through my channel and look at the Bautista bat flip, it is the best, in my opinion, in my opinion, the most exciting moment in baseball history, especially for Toronto Blue Jays, if not my whole life. Because the Bautista bat flip was just iconic. It's iconic. Anyway, Springer gets up, crushes a three run homer, takes us to the lead. Then we shut him down and it was like he was history. So it was amazing. I'm so happy. And then I looked at tickets and I'm like, we're not gonna beat LA. I know that. Shohei Ohtani, probably the best athlete in the entire world. Okay, right now, who can, who is an ace pitcher and hitting what fifty, sixty home runs a year? Like, they're unstoppable. They, people say LA is ruining baseball because they had, they, they just bought, they bought wins. Basically, they have the best team and we're not gonna win. Anyway, all that to say, we're not talking about Blue Jays today. I just wanted to gloat a little bit because I can until I can't. We're talking about this new creator called Brooke Raybold, new to me, not new to the internet. Brooke Raybold and her husband are some entitled pricks. And this is an interesting, interesting story about YouTubers who think they can just do whatever the hell they please. And it is awesome. So let's talk about it. Yeah, my friend Holly, I know you watch the show sometimes. She's been a Blue Jays fan for as long as I've been a Blue Jays fan. We've been, both grew up Blue Jays craze. She'd probably be a bigger fan than I am, to be honest with you. She prob, I haven't watched them in a couple of years because it's broke my damn heart and I just stopped watching them. I just can't do it, man. I can't be invested. But if they make it to October baseball, you damn well better believe I'm watching it, okay? Anyway, all that to say, she's trying to get tickets and they're already sold out in two seconds and the resale values are like four thousand dollars. Okay, look, I'm not paying thousands of dollars to watch my team lose. It's not happening. I know it's history that we're in the World Series for thirty-two years and you want to be part of history. But you know what I will do? Is I will drive down to Toronto and I'll hang out at the, the Toronto Square, whatever it's called. And you watch baseball there, bring a chair. It's like the energy is high if you're doing good. And if you lose, you didn't spend thousands of dollars to watch your team lose. I can't, I can't imagine spending thousands of dollars and like, and just walking out after a loss. I, no, thank you. I would be so upset, okay? But the, the tailgating and the fun stuff downtown Toronto, I would do that, okay? So that, that would be fun. Anyway, Blue Jays, go, like I was, I was going bananas. My, my daughter loves Springer. She's her favorite player. And now I have to get her a jersey because I told her would and like, that's my daughter and I's thing. Baseball. Baseball, it's our thing. So it was really, really magical last night. It was great. Anyway, so Brooke Raybold, I have had someone help me write up a little bit about her because I, there's a lot of lore to this one and it goes a little deeper than just what we're looking at today. But basically what drew her, my attention to her was they went to this town council meeting because they bought this like million dollar house. And they know it was zoned in a certain way, but they want a pool. Okay, now I'm not saying to get a pool is a bad idea, as long as you got a pool fence around it. You know what I'm saying, Emily Kaiser? You know what I'm saying? Get a pool fence, make sure it's safe, do a pool. I have a pool, kids should have pools. If you can afford a pool, let your kids have a pool. It's great exercise. It's fun for the whole family. Every, our house is the place where all, everybody comes over. I love it. Okay? Pools are great. I love pools. But for some reason, influences and pools are just like chalk and cheese, okay? It's just not, it's like Pepsi and Joe Louis. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't work. Okay? And it just brings them down. It's hilarious, actually. But Brooke Raybold is a creator and I'm just trying to find out what the lore here. She's a creator on YouTube and she's a piece of garbage, obviously, because she's a child exploiter. Like the first and foremost, child exploiter. No other way to say it, right? But they don't need to. Like they have generational wealth, apparently. They have like rich ass parents who are in real estate. They don't need to be exploiting their children, but they do. Because this woman has it all, right? Has a husband who worked for a politician, a US Senator, Republican US Senator, and now works for a huge law firm called Kirkland and Ellis. She played pro soccer. They've got, essentially on paper, they have it all. Everybody wants their life. She has it all. Will never have to struggle for groceries or gas or anything like that. They have tons and tons of money. They do not need YouTube. So when people like this do that, it's, they do it for the attention, which is arguably worse. Because you're giving away your child's like whole life online for literally for, like you could even say people who are poor, they do this and make money and okay. You could say that there's an excuse for it. I don't think it is, but you can say that, right? In the, in the grand scheme of things, you could say, look, that's all they have and so blah, 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 right? Which I think is still stupid, but I get it, right? Better than doing OnlyFans, I suppose, but maybe not. But these people who don't need to, who are already wealthy, like the turtle lady that does all the Christmas decor. I love her Christmas decor, like, I get it. But they exploit children too, her whole family does. But those people who are generational wealthy, why the fuck are you giving away your child's privacy on the internet? You don't need to. They don't need you to. You can give them everything they want without having to do this. And so she does this online for the attention, for the accolades, for the comments. Yes, queen slay. That's what she does it for. Which again, arguably worse because you're, it's a detriment to your children and you don't seem to give a shit about your children. That's what Brooke Raybold is all about and her husband. So here's the lore written up for me. Husband Ryan Raybold formerly worked for Republican US Senator, now works for a big law firm Kirkland and Ellis. Played pro soccer for a team in Sweden after college for like two years. He's not a pro soccer player, but I guess played low level pro soccer. It was kind of cool. He's a fitness guru. Loves fitness. He's a lawyer, so I'm sure I'm, I'll get a, he gets to see some assists for free, so I'm sure I'll get one of those. Parents sister, very wealthy, apparently from real estate. So they have a compound in Cabo, a compound, and Aspen, Colorado, that the Raybold's vacation at usually once a year. They also have a timeshare in Maui. Whenever they come to visit their daughter, they usually stay at a hotel in a very, so the parents and the sister are, are very hands off. They're very, obviously they're wealthy. They don't need to be like, they're, you know, they're kind of like, you know, these types of people that, you know, they're very hands off as grandparents. They're not very good. When they came to watch the kids while they had baby number five in the hospital, they left town the day they came home from the hospital. Like, well, peace out. We have our light. We have to get to the country club. They usually just meet up for meals. I don't know how much about the sister, but it's very obvious that Brooke is jealous of her sister. And they equally get what they want from mommy and daddy. Her sister recently had a very nice pool put in her house. So now Brooke wants the same. And that's where this starts. It's the fight for the pool because her sister has one and now Brooke's like, I need a pool. Let's go to your sister's house, dumbass. Uh, but you can't because they have to have their own. When they bought, when they bought the Raybold's one point five million dollar Virginia house, public record, public records show that they had no mortgage. They bought cash. They bought this house outright. They bought her sister a house of equal value. They both got, oh, so the parents bought the houses. Holy shit. Can you be my parents? They bought, they both got Rolex watches from their parents, et cetera. Here's the, no proof there, whatever. Anyway, there's apparently there's proof that they bought the house outright. Her parents probably paid for it. In-law. So Ryan's family runs a mid-sized Midwest grocery store chain. His sister was on the show Survivor. My wife loves that show. His mom has unintentionally outed herself on Brooke's snark Reddit thread a few months ago when there was a discussion about her daughter's participation on Survivor. She made a comment in support of her daughter and looking at the comment history, narrowed it down that it was Ryan's mom. But she never commented in defense of her son or daughter-in-law. That's, hey? Sounds like, uh, Ryan's mom doesn't like Brooke. I wouldn't either. Cause wait till you see this bitch. Okay, wait till you see this shit. It's awesome. Is there proof on this one? I love when people do write-ups like this for me. They're so good. For those who missed the Willa discovery this weekend, here's a quick recap I found in last week's thread. Apparently this is it. Someone's gonna have to explain the whole Willa and Allison commenting as such. Allison is Brian's sister. She was a season of Survivor. Ryan's brothers are comedians. Really? Someone posted yesterday defending Allison. It looks, Ryan's brothers are comedians. They're gonna love my show. Thanks for coming, Ryan's brothers. I hope you're watching. You, I love comedians. I think you're good. Like, what do you, I want to know what you think of Brooke. I'll keep it secret. You know, I won't tell anybody, I promise. I won't, I won't. If you, if you reach out to me, I want, I want to know the Brooke lore. I know the parents hate her, like everybody else. Her parents probably love her and her sister because, you know, they're rich and they're generational wealthy and blah, blah, blah. And you all that to say, uh, yeah, so the mom even doesn't, uh, the mother-in-law doesn't like Brooke. And I don't like Brooke either and I don't even really know her. So, children Rhett, ten, Vance, eight, Bowden, Bowden, Buden? Buford, Quaid and Cal. Not terrible names. Rhett, I had a cat named Rhett once. I don't want to snark on the kids' behaviors because they are learned from their parents, but vaguely the oldest child has a problem behavior and attitude wise. A few parents of kids who are on the sports team who played against his team have come forward saying he's an aggressive and mean to the other kids. She plays it off as boys will be boys. That's probably entitled, rich children. That's just, comes with the territory and that's not an excuse. Don't raise your children to be that way or you're assholes. You can be rich and raise really great children, okay? I don't know if I've met any, but I'm sure there are some out there. Her four-year-old son Quaid obviously has speech language delays, most likely autism to some degree. She has purposely ignored them. Back in Virginia, his preschool teacher met her and gave her a long list of problems to look into. And after the meeting, she went on stories, basically brushed it off as all kids learn at their own pace and boys will be boys. So it sounds like she doesn't give a shit about her kids. Horrible nicknames for the boys. Rhett is ready. Rue dog and Rue. Vance is prancy and Vancy. Bowden is Momo and Mo. Quaid is Lols and Lidl boy. Cal is lunky, lunky Lou and King Cal. Stupid assholes. I bet you they're Mormon too. Grew up in a crazy huge mansion in Orange County, California. She's an undergrad at USC. It's suspected that her dad paid for her to get in. She claims multiple times and still does to the day that she was a rower in college. Records from the years that she would have been on the team shows that she was never a member of the team. Also, her workout form is absolutely atrocious. No way she was a competitive athlete of any kind. She has said that she has a party year in college and didn't really see the point in school. That's because she's rich and she didn't need to go to school. College was some of my most fun times ever. If I was a really wealthy kid, I'd still go to college just for the fun of it. You see Van Wilder? Kind of like that. I totally do that. Cause college is fun. So she says she's a rower, but she's built like a brick of cheese. So I don't believe it. After college, she worked for her dad for a year-ish. She got a bad evaluation or something, so she quit for her dad's company. Okay. And that's when she decided she wanted to be an entrepreneur. She met Ryan in Dallas where she was scouting out colleges, AKA husband hunting, and just knew he was the one. They got married one point five years later to a country club in Aspen and moved to DC. Then he moved around like five times to and from DC, Nashville and Dallas, where lived in a small apartment and started from nothing, which I, no, they didn't. AKA an apartment much nicer than most newlyweds can afford because their mommy and daddy paid for it. There we go. Yeah, that's just some low-level apartment, eh? Love it. Love this. I love the lore. They give me the write-ups. So Georgetown MBA, her favorite accessory that she likes to pull out to make her seem better than everyone else. Her daddy definitely paid to get her in and probably paid for her to pass. She got pregnant and had her first in between the two years of her MBA. So she had a nanny come and take care of her son on a new lawyer salary. Right? While she went to school, she also had her, said her professors would give her BS work. An interview she did while completing her MBA, worth the read, but definitely read under time management tips. I can't read that. After MBA, I don't know much between the time and when she started making reels, pandemic time. All I know, she started her Instagram with a friend, a blog style called Kaitlyn Illa. I'm not sure what happened to that friend. Eventually she transitioned to her letterboard days. I don't know what that is. During the pandemic, she shifted to reels because that's what everyone was doing. Now her whole shtick is I'm a mom of five boys and sound better than you at everything. That's standard, right? The rich, the rich ladies. Article where she felt like she struck gold. Interesting. Let's take a look at that. Utah joins California, Illinois, establishing a safeguard for child influencers. She has something to do with this? Utah is the state, latest state to enact safeguards. Wait, what? Brooke Raybold, a mom of four young sons, said she had felt like she had struck gold when she began to make money off social media posts featuring her life as a mom of four boys. She did strike gold. That's, it is gold to exploit your children. It's like straight, it is craziness. Raybold, who now lives in Texas, started sharing her life on Instagram after becoming pregnant with her first son while in school for MBA. After graduating, Raybold chose to be a state-owned mom and she saw her social media content as a way to continue to be entrepreneurial. Fuck off with that entrepreneurial bullshit. Kept me doing something in addition to motherhood. Sounds like you didn't want to be a mother. Blah, blah, blah. Anyway, there's a lot of, I might do more of this. But here's a right pretentious. She has done and said so many things in the past, showing that she thinks she's above the rules and not aware of the extreme privilege she has in this life. The easement issue is a big one, which we're gonna get into. But even little things like always calling employees workers, very condescendingly and always demanding free stuff when there are minor inconveniences, demanding a free lightning lane pass when a ride was closed down at Disney. The audacity. I hope Disney laughed in your effing face. She has done dozens of stories and reels showing off her four million dollar McMansion from the time they bought it while it was still under construction to when each room was horrendously decorated by their interior decorator. Instead of thanking God, she's an alleged Christian when it's convenient for her to use, but she doesn't go to church. In fact, she says that God told her he wants her boys at hockey rink on Sundays instead of the church. Okay, so that church thing, I want to bring that up because I think that's important here. So she did a video here. This is her faith journey. Look at this.
Five boys, this is why our Sunday starts at five.
It's five AM in Texas and we finally found a church.
But my walk with faith hasn't always followed the traditional path. Maybe that's exactly how God wanted it.
That's stupid. You're just rich. Rich people have this unhealthy obsession with themselves and it's, that's why it says, that's why the Bible says that it's easier for the camel to pass her eye of a needle than a rich person to get to heaven. Because rich people enjoy such privilege and they cannot understand anything but privilege. And that makes, honestly, it really truly does, is a very negative, net negative for people generally in your spirits and who you really are in selfishness. It really is. That's why I'm so glad I grew up poor sometimes because I can understand and I can see where I came from. Jenny from the block, you know what I'm saying? But again, that's, again, the Bible does not lie about rich people.
Never my belief in God I struggled with, but the rules, the expectations, the pressure to perform instead of just listen. I used to think being a good Christian meant checking the boxes. Go to church, say the right thing.
This girl was a rower? A rower? Okay, you're built like Blob the Builder, so no.
Ask, what if holiness isn't about how still you sit in church, but how boldly you show?
How many dryer sheets do you need? You got enough?
What for the life God whispered into your heart. And this life with five boys, early mornings, chaos, it's loud, but it's also where I hear him most. So when people say, Sundays are for rest, but what if they're not? What if rest doesn't mean slowing down?
Coming time, she has to move this tripod around her mansion. I watch influencers walk away from their camera somewhere. You just gotta picture them. Cause then they stop and they go back and pick up their camera every time.
Actually asking of you.
The Bible says, remember the Sabbath.
But the Proverbs thirty-one woman?
She was up before the sun.
Not to hit snooze, but to run the house.
Manage her investments.
Prep the day and get ahead.
Are you using the Proverbs thirty-one woman to say you don't need to go to church? I, I, I agree with you. Like people will be upset when they were saying this. You don't need to go to church to be a Christian, everybody. And on the contrary, like some churches make you less of a Christian. Like I'm not even kidding you. Okay, the, the pastors, the celebrities, the, the people who waste money, the, the, the country club, the coffee houses, the, the bullshit that goes inside of churches, it makes you worse. You're listening to heresy sometimes and you don't even know it and it makes it dangerous and you should be careful. So you don't need to go to church to be a Christian, but you should find a place to serve and, and, and be connected and do hear the word if you're not ingesting it yourself. So I say you should go. Saying you don't need to though. Okay. And there's a big argument out there right now about baptism and everything else. You need to be baptized to go to heaven. No, you don't. If someone ever tells you that, you slap them right in the nutsack, okay? No, you do not have to be baptized to go to heaven. Okay, that's, that's bullshit. Straight up. There's only one way to heaven, through Jesus Christ, okay? And it's supposed to be easy. It's not supposed to have safeguards and hardships or, like, it's gonna be hard, but it's not supposed to be hard. Okay? Salvation is easy and that's what makes us so beautiful. So F this lady.
Entrepreneurial, strategic, steady. She didn't wait for quiet. She made it. She didn't wait for direction. She led. Honestly, I think we'd get along.
I flip a load of laundry and some mascara.
I hate this bitch.
Light a La Coli while rushing out.
Finish a sentence or a breath first.
Out the door for hockey. Yes, hockey. On a Sunday.
Sabbath or not, I'm too proud to give that up.
I want my boys in the arena.
And honestly, I think God does too.
Because.
No, he doesn't. I, look, maybe he does. I, I, again, I, I can't argue with that because I, I don't think you need to go to church, but at the same time, don't be like, God definitely wants us to Hawkins dead. You can't say that either, though.
Faith to me isn't about looking the part. It's about listening deeply.
To the life God is speaking through you.
The one that makes you want to wake up at five AM.
Because you actually have the courage to live unapologetically.
Even when it invites you into a life that only makes sense to you and God.
And as we roll into church.
Pastor's message that day, Martha and Mary.
One working.
The other at his feet.
And it hit me.
I'm Martha.
But obediently living God's plan for my life.
No, you're not Martha. You're a douchebag.
Maybe we're not meant to choose.
Maybe we're meant to be both.
Both? Did you just say both with an L? What in the F is wrong with people in the States? Why do you say both? Stop it! Anyway, the pastor spoke out on that, apparently. Do I have that here? He spoke out on this. Kind of funny. Listen to this.
Friendships in your life. In fact, I had a friend of mine said she was looking on Instagram and she saw this one lady and she was bragging about how she doesn't have any friends. She said, I, I have my husband, I have my kids and I have my career. Have all these things. So I don't really need friends. And she was kind of bragging, I, I don't have friends. I don't need friends. And I thought, you know, how sad is that, right? Because you were created for community. You were created for fellowship with people. And that's how God made you.
Is he making fun of Brooke right now? Cause she doesn't have any friends. And she, and it's not because of church. It's not because of it. It's because she's like a selfish, entitled twat. That's why she could blame her parents for that.
And so what we're gonna talk.
And your kids aren't gonna have any friends either.
Talk about today is that how do you make room for people in your life?
Who are assholes. That's what we meant to say. Okay, so anyway, there's so much lore to this and I want to get into it all because it's the type of creator that I have a lot of fun with in snark. But what I want to get to is this, this city ordinance thing, okay? So we gotta go up to this. Okay, so here's kind of the lore. I'll give you some of these notes. So here it is. Brooke and Ryan live in Oak Alley Development, which is developed around twenty nineteen. The development next to them called Tanglewood was opposed to the Oak Valley Development being built because of the way the house is oriented. Their front yards would be right up to Oak Alley's backyards. They didn't want to deal with the noise. The only reason the Oak Alley Development is there is because they agreed upon twenty-five foot easement that the Tanglewood HOA fought for. Brooke and Ryan now want to get rid of the easement on their property only because they want a giant pool, okay? The main pool itself is planned to be sixteen point five by thirty-five feet, a large pool. Not including the hot tub, the pool decking or the sun shelf. They want to decrease the easement from twenty-five down to seven feet, okay? This other place is like, hell no. Okay, don't fight with HOAs. Don't even move into them. They also want to add a sport court, which would also cut into the easement. They didn't tell the council this, which probably pickleball. Which is fun. I agree with that. Um, that is the big reason why they don't want to move the pool further to the side of the house. They wouldn't be able to have a sport court. They are claiming that they didn't know about the easement until after they moved in. That's not an excuse. You're stupid. You have a bad Realtor and you're a lawyer. So this is not because it wasn't disclosed to them during the purchasing process, but because they were so rushed to move in, they didn't take time to read the reports, surveys, therefore making it entirely their fault. And this guy's a lawyer? Interesting. And you're millionaires? And your, your Realtor didn't tell you that shit? Okay. All right. Buyer beware kind of thing, right? Picture of the pool rendering of the pool. Here is the picture of the pool rendering. That's what they want. So the easement would cut to seven feet by the, by the fence here. So it needs to be twenty-five feet. So sounds like they can put the pool like right here, right here, right? Like they're never, they can't. Basically, what you're saying is you can't do that because the easement doesn't allow for it. And so these people were like, um, do they know that we're rich YouTubers? And so they went and she made this plan and she, she drew up this thing and I have the videos here. I'm gonna show you. So here's the rendering, link to the document submitted to the commission. This, the, my person here, she gave me everything. Okay, this is, I have all, like, thank you for this, okay? So here is, there was even a zoning commission meeting where all the timestamps talk about why they can't have the pool and everything else. And so Brooke, here, I'll show you what she posted first. Let's see if we can get that. So this is Brooke being a douche. This is so interesting to me. I love this stuff. It's just like, you hate that, you love to see rich people just get hammered. I love it.
I'm gonna share a little bit of our presentation. It's actually pretty good. And I'd say the most important point, Hunter, you're gonna help? Is that it's reasonable. Like we just want.
Um, I'm gonna say the most important point is that I made it and it's just, there's no way they can deny us this. Right? Like, omega guys, like, no, because we're rich and I have a Instagram. They don't, that HOA does not want to mess with my Instagram.
Pool, a reasonably sized pool in our backyard.
The whole backyard. Bitch, you guys are millionaires. Go move to a damn ranch or something. If I had the kind of money that these people have, I would be like, I would have cows, chickens, goats, elephants. I would do whatever. I could have a hundred dogs. Barn cats that could come in the house if they want. Like, these people have so much money. They moved to the tiniest little postage stamp lot. Why? You don't even have friends. Why would you want to be near people?
Starts with an intro about our family. Why we chose the area, why we bought our house.
No one gives a shit about your family, okay? Follow the rules or get out.
And how we did not know that the house had a twenty-five foot easement when we bought it.
Oh no, that's too bad for you. Your husband's a fucking lawyer. Blame him.
Then we show kind of pictures of the pool. We talk about kind of some of the core.
Kinda, it's kinda like, I, yeah, shut up.
Why we think we should be able to have a pool, namely that it's a unique hardship to our particular lot.
Unique hardship? Gotta be kidding me. She's so confident too that she's gonna get in there and be like, we're fixing those. We're getting a pool.
Our lot is horizontal and the way that it's like structured in our neighborhood, that the easement has the biggest impact on our lot.
Again, you spent over a million dollars, almost two million dollars on a house and you have literally no grass or anywhere for kids to play? That's, that's kind of on you. Maybe you should have just built a house.
Put some photos of the pool to show basically that it's pretty reasonable.
Shut up.
I didn't say this like fully in the presentation, but what we're trying to show is that because of the position of our lot in the community, that it's like a horizontally positioned lot and the variance just goes like this across the neighborhood, that our lot is kind of unfairly impacted.
Uh, is it unfair, impac, uh, it's too bad you bought it. Bitch, you bought the house, you dumbass. That's not unfairly impacted. You could have been like, hey, you know what? This house looks like it's unfairly impacted by this lot line thing. We're not gonna purchase it. Let's look at some other ones. Like, are you listening to these rich assholes? Who like, the only thing you complain about is you can't put a massive pool in your backyard. You think people are really gonna care, Brooke? You think people care? You dumbass.
Keep you posted. The meeting is at seven PM.
Give me a long video.
So Ryan's gonna do most of the talking and I'm just gonna, you know.
Do, what she's gonna do is smirky ass comments and side digs at these people and like make it worse. And Ryan's gonna be like, bitch, shut up. That's what Ryan's gonna. Wait, guys, I haven't even seen all, I've only seen a couple parts of it. Oh my gosh, you wait. Cause the story's great. Cause like spoiler alert, they lose and it's so tasty.
Cool. Not get myself into trouble because you get like emotional during these things.
Yeah, no, I, I get emotional during the times where I'm like, I just want a pool in my mansion. These people are so out of touch. They're so out of touch. Brooke, you wonder why I have no friends? I, I just, I wonder if you wonder. Because this is why you have no friends. I just, I don't know if you're wondering, but I'm gonna let you know why.
That's it. Call for me, my name is Lucky.
Yeah, you know what I noticed in that drawing? There was no pool fence around that. I, I did notice that. While she has a toddler there. While everything's going down with Emily Kaiser, all these influencers need to shut their effing mouths and put up a damn effing fence.
This is interesting too. This line right here shows where the easement would go. If the easement were in place, we would have to build our pool here, making it like a tiny little pool. This.
Oh no, not a tiny pool.
Picture shows like how much the easement goes into our yard. This.
Yeah, we, they know that. They don't need a picture. They know it. You should have known it too. Like, they're like, okay, no. Are you saying by showing it, we're gonna change our minds or something?
Shows that our pool basically like backs up to a driveway and vegetation, not a house. Like the house is over here, but our.
Easements.
Pool would back up right here. This kind of just shows that easement impacts our house kind of the most.
Again, then you shouldn't have bought it. You should have bought the house, you dumbass.
As of the way that the streets go down, engineering letter to show that the wall will not collapse and that like sound.
So it sounds like they spent thousands of dollars on engineering plans and things like that and they're not gonna be able to put their pool in. Love it. Oh, I love karma.
Hated. Um, this just talks about the pool is consistent with like what our neighborhood wants or like general.
Anyway, so they lost. Where's the one where they lost? She came home and she's all pissed about it. Anyway, I don't know where that went, but here's another video.
I'm the five boys. I don't have a nanny, but that doesn't mean I don't get help.
Here's exactly what I do and why. Some people assume I have a nanny. I don't. Not because I'm against help. I believe in getting help. I just personally love having my kids by my side.
And I honestly don't.
She's lying.
Don't love having people in my house.
But here's what I've learned.
But then she has people in her house cleaning it.
We all need help.
Modern motherhood often.
Shut the, okay, so, um, here's the video, which we're gonna watch break down. We're not gonna watch the whole thing. It's like, like the, the, the audacity of these dick holes to sit in front of this commission for like, and the commission gave them it, like hours, like an, over an hour, they sat here and, and pled their case for over an hour. Are you out of your mind? So I have the timestamps, which we're gonna look through here. So this is the Colleyville, Texas Planning and Zoning Commission Public Meeting. The actual public meeting where they made their case to the commission and they made the actual, and they made the formal decision to deny the easement variance request. So they did all this, they paid all this money to get all these engineer plans and all this scum stuff and they're gonna like plead their case because of troubles and hardship. Man, is this mad? I have this nice heating pad on my feet, so nice. Um, and they're gonna go here and they're gonna sit there for an hour, okay? Anyway, so they spent all this money and they just go, and so let's get to this. So, uh, it opens at six, eight. Anyway, so they spent all this money on these guys. And so let's get to this. So, uh, it opens at six, 18. The staff presentation of the case and the info we have all heard. So 11:14 is where it really spices up. Let's get to it.
The Rabel family and we just moved from DC back to Texas. This is home and we love Texas and we love Colleyville.
Oh, okay.
And the idea that we were leaving DC and we would be in a city council zoning board commission meeting. Five months after getting to the place that we call home, we want to raise our five boys is a little Orwellian to us, but here we are and we thank you for.
Orwellian. So don't miss what he just told and said there. If you've never read the book 1944 by Orwell, it's, it's like basically saying like, I cannot believe with this is so much government control. How dare the government control what we can do with our property? There was easements before. It's not like they brought the easement after. I can understand you being complaining if they like, oh, they changed the rules. Bro, you're a lawyer, man. And she's standing there like, we're going to get this pool and I'm going to make Instagram and reels out of it and all this shit. So Ryan's instructions of family requests, starting out strong by insulting the council, saying it's Orwellian in reference to Orwell's 1944. For them to be here five months after we texted, find a pool built because Texas has the land of no property restrictions. Okay?
Listening to us. We thought we were leaving DC to come to Texas to get away from restrictions.
Yeah. Did you? Well, you were wrong. I mean, these restrictions exist all over the country and here too, everywhere. Property restrictions exist for reasons. Those, you cannot put a pool there for a reason. Okay. And the reason is, who cares what the reason is? You can't do it. And you're trying.
We, we love Texas. We love Colleyville. You know, I've worked in as a lawyer in politics. I worked for Senator Cornyn for many years and learned, you know, what is a reasonable request? And what is unreasonable opposition?
Yeah.
And my wife here, who's much more talented than me.
At what? Rowing? At what? What is she more talented than you at? Being a douche?
Is the mother of her five young boys.
Talented how? Here's the hour start. Bitch deck. We're in a mansion. We love mansions. What's going on? Wait, I have a little bear. See a little bear down there? Um, our family moved back to Texas. Ryan worked for Senator John Cornyn. Brooke shares lifestyle and family content on social media. They hate you. They hate you at this point.
We are doing our best day by day to instill God given values in them.
Yeah.
To raise true Texas boys and to hold very important principles that we hold near and dear to our hearts.
Guns and shit.
They go off and set the world on fire.
Oh, is that, is that what they're going to do? Are they going to be Antifa? All right. Let's go down to 1411. Apparently they call the easement a political concession. 1411.
It, it sits down. Um.
Why'd you put the pool over there? What's stopping you from a pool over there? Even an L shaped pool? Put one over there.
Our understanding is that this was a political concession that was made sort of in the sausage making process at the time. I think there was probably a lot of, um, anxiety about what was going to be built in Oak Alley, but Oak Alley is here. And the people are here and we're young. We love Oak Alley. We love Colleyville. This is the place we are raising our children and it.
Not without a, not with a pool though. That's for sure.
Is identified as such because of all the values that you will believe in. We have the same values.
No, no, you don't. You're trying to break these men. He's not the same values.
It's, it's really a family centered area for us.
All right. Who cares? So 1530, he says something pretty stupid. Apparently let's get there.
Family pool. We could of course do a little plunge pool. Um, but if you can imagine boys jumping from one side to the next would present severe safety risks.
Then don't put it in. Weiner. So he's like, we need a big pool. So they can't jump from one side to the other. Don't put it in then, Weiner. Um.
Here's some other photos. Um, one of the key points I think we want to make is that, you know, there's important, and we respect the, you know, views of.
Why is she even there? She's standing there with her resting bitch face. Not helping, Brooke. You're not helping.
Our neighbors and we welcome, um, those conversations. We've tried to talk to them. We've tried to work with them. We've tried to mitigate any concerns. Mr. Obanobo has been to our house. We've invited all you, but I understand maybe you didn't want to come see it. We've tried, we just.
Who would want to try to grease the palms of the city councils? That we trying to do here?
Want to be reasonable. We're happy to add in landscaping, but you can see we're going to maintain that giant wall. That's there as well as the.
It's a fence. Relax.
Current vegetation, which is beautiful. And you can see these are.
One tree. Literally in some cedars. Vegetation, vegetation. Shut up lawyer.
Or different pictures of our rendering. And, uh, Ben, we put a red line for emphasis and effect, but you can see that.
Looks, you can get a hot tub. Just get a hot tub. Get one of those pool hot tub things where you can swim in it. It's got like, it does laps. Do one of those.
It, it really juts right in the middle of the pool and, and this is not.
Actually it's more on this side. So you get, it's way against what you want to do.
Not, you know, Hard Rock Hotel. This is a basic safe family pool. Um.
No pools are safe, especially without a fence. Cause then you gotta add a fence to that, by the way. To this, and then you gotta add more because you gotta put a fence around it because you can't just put it right up against the damn thing. So you also have to add like what? Three or four feet or three feet minimum, I think of a fence around that pool, which is going to add more. It's going to take even more into the easement. You're going to be like, you're going to be inches off of that fence. So no.
And, and you know, we just want to underscore like, we do not actually believe the drafters that were doing the sausage making process would.
Stop saying that. Stop calling the sausage making process. It's literally just process of planning developments. Sausage man. You don't even, you don't even like sausages.
Would actually want one family. To not have a pool for their children. I don't.
No, that's definitely how they planned it. They were, they're sitting around, they're smoking cigars and drinking rum. And they're like, you know what? This family that's going to move into this house, they ain't getting no pool. Give them less easement. Let's do, come on buddy. Shut up dude. I'm glad you got denied.
That's the case. And this isn't the nose on the camel's nose under the tent.
Is that a thing? Is that a phrase?
If you go back and we, we can get to some Google Earth.
I'm a camel trying to get through Ivan Neil.
Lots in a minute. It is the only lot that is dramatically impacted.
Yeah.
By this landscape easement. However.
And it's a lot you didn't have to buy. I wish those people could speak and be like, why'd you buy it? Well, we didn't know. Well, that's kind of on you. Why don't you sell it?
Well intentioned. We're not going to get into ill intentions or the like.
There was no ill intentions. Nobody has a crystal ball to see who is going to move into their house. Because it wouldn't make sense because you guys are assholes, but they didn't have the crystal ball. How could they have ill intentions to be like, I hope Brooke Raybold buys this house because I made it specifically so she would be angry with it. Like what kind of logic? This guy's a lawyer? I am a, I am a Bible's college loser and I know more than he does about what he's trying to say. I could dismantle his argument in easily. It's so silly. What you're saying there, you're, you're suggesting that they did this on purpose to piss you off. No one knew. You were going to buy that property, man. What?
Here's a picture of my son Vance. You know, you can see that it slopes down and there's that very high, it's well over six feet. That would be preserved. It, it, it makes it effectively impossible to really use our backyard.
Yeah, I know.
And you know, in the Texas heat, this is having a pool is, is sort of unnecessary and.
No, it's not sort of unnecessary. I think you meant to say necessity, but no, it's not sort of a necessary. It's a luxury. Stop being a dink. You have air conditioning. Shut the hell up.
We're just asking for your support on that front.
Anyway, jump to 1930. Apparently says something stupid here too, which is great.
This is the only home in Oak Alley. So the, the argument, hey, you know, if we do this, we gotta do it for, I heard someone mentioned the fence thing. Not happening. And, and that should not change the fact that you all exist.
Look at all these houses with pools. They're going to be the only one in neighborhood without a pool. Love it. I love that for Brooke. I do love it for her. Karma. I love me some karma. Brooke Raybold gets some karma and all the people that hate her are like, yeah. They're watching this laughing.
To identify and remedy unique hardships. That, that's.
Shut up dude. It's not a hardship that you can't have a pool.
That is, that is why you're here to make a case by case determination and the sausage.
I will trade you your hardships for mine. I have some, but those are not hardships. Wanker. Oh, I lied. I, you know, everybody's sitting in this council, listen, this is like, is this guy fair? They're like passing notes. You like in the little text chat on their computers. This guy's a winner. We're like dweeb. They're probably calling him a dweeb. He's a dweeb.
This is of legislation. When something isn't right, you fix it and you keep fixing it and you try to do it in a thoughtful way.
Okay. I don't care. 2153 apparently calls out the snark Reddit page. What?
We think that this condition as applied is, was not intended to harm one family disproportionately its use and enjoyment. We don't think that's the case. We know.
It wasn't the case, but you sort of alluded to that it was the case. So we're kind of, okay.
This was sausage making. We've talked.
This guy really loves sausages, eh?
At least one former city council member who's been to our property. Frankly, she was aghast at the impact it had on us.
She rolls up to this mansion. Okay. She pulls in in her Audi R eight, which is probably what she has. Let's be real. Okay. Or Subaru. She gets in, they, they welcome her in, they give her some, you know, southern iced tea, which is weird because your, your iced tea in the south is literally tea. It's weird. And you know, you get out to the back and they, you're like, look, and then this is what she does. I am aghast. This guy, lawyers.
Very shocked. And she was one of the main people that was negotiating this.
Shocked at this development that was built and planned and approved before it was ever even the shovel went into the ground. Shocked, I tell you, aghast.
That was the original opposition and she had a big heart and she saw that this needs to be fixed. We, we kind of had, I know there's a couple, it sounds like there's more objections, although oddly some of them are from places all over, but one of the individuals is behind us that I think a couple of points to, to raise here.
What?
You know, we.
What did that mean? Calls out the Reddit snark page?
He, we think that our request fully aligns with the intent of Colbyville's residential zoning standards.
I didn't hear anything about Reddit. So, okay. That's what I was looking for. 2352 said all those neighbors in Oak Alley were in support. So let's hear this. 2332.
Immediately next to us, like I mentioned before, that are in support of this and obviously we need a pool to stop that. But we, we were able to solicit our.
Is that funny?
Some of our neighbors in Oak Alley. I think we got about 16 or 17 folks that weighed in, a number of folks, including Mrs. Jean, who's wonderful. We haven't had.
What about the lady that was aghast?
Chance to talk to her yet. Um, we will. Um, but you know, there's obviously overwhelming support as well. We, you can see this is a bad attempt.
Imagine these are your problems. This is what you have to deal with. Oh my gosh. There are literally people who are about to have EBT canceled on them. Because the government shutdown and they're not going to be able to feed their families. Like literally legitimately, there's going to be some huge struggles coming your way in the US very, very, very soon. Um, and this guy's out here being like, my pool. Oh buddy, you gotta be kidding me right now. This is recent too, by the way. This is like last week.
For me, but I'm raising my hand to kind of show you the height of the wall, which will be maintained. We got a, uh, engineering letter establishing that there's not going to have any structural impact.
We obtained structural engineering statement barrier, not distance control sound. Once a solid wall breaks line of sight, main, the main noise direction comes from the barriers height material. That ain't going to keep sound. The kids screaming out, you have five boys who are all feral. Looks like, sounds like. That's what people are complaining about. This other neighborhood, when they fought to have this thing built, they didn't like this. And so they said, you gotta do this at very minimum, man. You kind of want pools here and all this. There's a 25 foot on top of the variance in the street. That's what they did that for, because kids are going to be loud. And these other people also bought two million dollar mansions and they'd like to enjoy their properties as well. Right? They are aghast as well at that sound, which I think is a beautiful sound. Kids having a good time playing. They should be outside playing, but that's not neither here nor there. Some people don't like it. Sounds like this is a more of a retirement community for people a little bit older. Right? So F off is basically what they're saying. Noise impact will be negligible. There's a large concrete retaining wall that mitigates and it's not going to be negligible, bro. That's maybe if it was 18 feet, maybe.
Act. You know, the noise impact, I've heard maybe a couple of those whispers, uh, large whispers. Concrete retaining wall mitigates any sound. We're happy to.
It does not mitigate any sound. The fact you say there's a lawyer, you're lying. It does not mitigate any sound. It doesn't mitigate any at all. Actually, you'll be able to hear everything on your side of that. It's not going to stop any sound. None. It's going to carry right over that damn thing. Okay? Do you know how sound works?
Put in more trees to make it look even prettier and mitigate anyone's sound concerns.
Stop saying mitigate.
You know? We don't think that this really has any public utility anymore. In fact, we think that, you know, there's a number of reasons here, but we think it's time to, as applied, remove it for us.
Not anybody else, just us or us. So we can have a pool because hardships and a gasness.
Will continue to respect the public utility easement. We think destination Colleyville, this is very consistent with the comprehensive plan, which we're all in support of. We want.
Apparently you're not in support of the plan that has easements. That's, doesn't sound like you're in support of that.
Well, to be the best. We think it's on the path. We want to be part of that with you all. We're, we're perhaps younger than some here.
Oh.
Going anywhere. This is our house. This is our home and this is where we want to raise our kids, but we are fully bought in to preserving the integrity of the, uh, the neighborhoods.
But want to break these men. So no, you're not fully bought into, to, to retaining the essence of these agreements. No, you're not. You're trying to break it at this meeting. Literally what he's saying is like, we're fully bought into keeping this. Nope. Cause you're trying to break it. Literally trying to break the rules right now. You're trying to get a, a major variance passed. That's not going to happen. This major variance that I'm looking forward to is really, really like, when you apply for, this is the same way in Canada. Applying for major variances is very difficult. Minor variances, they'll let it go, right? You want to build in the lean to, that's too close to a fence. You're like, look, I just got, you know, they'll let you do it, right? Do you want to take a 25 foot easement and knock it less than like less than half? Good luck, bruh. Especially in a rich area, you know, because the other people got to comment on this, right? Not just the friends and neighbors, but the other, the other side's like, you know, we're not, we're not doing this. Nope. This is the agreement that was put in place to build this where it is. These are the plans that were put in place. You cannot change that. Cause we will sue the living shit out of you. That's this, this board also has to like take into consideration that we'll be sued by everybody else.
The charm is what drew us here and the Texas values. People talk to you when you're in.
Nobody talks to you guys. No one likes you. So 2644. Okay. Here's Brooke. She's going to start crying apparently. Yes.
Thank you for listening. I don't really have much to add. Um.
That was a lie. She has lots to add, including making fun of people and getting pissed. Just wait, guys. This gets good. Okay?
Just appreciate you listening. We, uh, I'll probably start crying.
Yeah, no, we. We get it. Pool in my mansion. Like the Kardashians don't have this much audacity. Do you know what I'm saying? When they go grocery shopping and try to cut a cucumber and shit, they're like, what's, uh, what's regular people do? Like you're going to start crying? I love this. And then she starts.
Just had a baby.
Oh yeah. No. Yeah. Did you? It looks like eight months.
We are just very.
Buddy, it's a pool, man. You gotta be kidding me right now. Oh my gosh. You're going to be okay, baby.
Excited about this house and we, uh, I won't go into the details, but I'm just finding this out kind of in the nth inning of everything. We had already moved here. And so we, we feel a little bit of, you know, responsibility, but we also kind of looked at the situation, just hoping that people would look at this objectively, see our family.
So she's saying there, they're saying that they're not looking at objectively.
Objectively, and if you were in our situation, kind of having bought this house in Texas and Colleyville, you know, with your family, hoping for something reasonable as we think we are, um, and, and maintaining that stuff.
It's not reasonable. You're literally trying to demolish the rules by more than half. Like you're trying to obliterate the rules.
Unfoot easement. We felt like we kind of moved into a situation that we didn't know the history of, quite frankly.
Your fault. Nobody else's fault. That's your fault. You have a husband who is a lawyer, literally job is to. Your fault. Nobody else's fault. That's your fault. You have a husband who is a lawyer, literally job is to look at contracts probably most of his life. Okay, your fault.
And maybe we should have. It sounds like we should have.
Yeah, you think so?
Meetings. Understood what went on and we're simply just a family who moved here, who loves it here. I specifically scouted out Collyville. Um, myself, this house and, uh, it's not.
Why are you crying? You stupid moron. It's a pool in the back of a mansion. Why are you crying? I hope the people on this council are looking, are like, and again, you know that the text chat was lit during this moment.
Crying over, in some ways it is, but, um, we just had this vision for our family and um, we hope that people can understand and based on the research we've done, similar to Ryan's points, it doesn't seem packed down. So then we were just trying to figure out, well, what really was the issue? Maybe it was the history.
The issue is the rules. This way that it was built, they were putting that first. That's the issue. That's the only issue.
There and the, you know, maybe the anger that this community came in and then we felt like we stepped into it. And so we just hope people consider that now like real, real families with real children.
Need a real pool without a fence.
Are, are living there, are living here.
Did they think that not real people were gonna live there?
And that's pretty, pretty much, pretty much it.
Thanks for your input, crack ass. Thanks for nothing. Wow, good job, buddy.
That's all we got.
Thank God.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll, we'll probably, uh, call you back up at some point. Uh, we do have some speakers, so they may have questions that you would want to answer.
So now other people get to come present their shit. And I guess this is like, so the cowboy hat guy, which is a former city council member who was serving at the time of the drama around the development was happening.
So at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. The public hearing is open. I have two speakers. Okay, I have one speaker for this case, uh, George Dodson.
Let's go, George.
Good afternoon, good evening. Do you need my name and address? I thank you for the opportunity to come tonight. Several, I don't know all of you. I served, uh, for six years on the city council and also served several years on, uh, P and Z, uh, and, and my final time on P and Z was, was as chairman. I, I come tonight, uh, because I was heavily involved in, uh, Oak Alley. And, and, uh, the evaluation of it. So I, I actually come in, in strong opposition to this request. And for those that aren't aware, when, uh, Oak Alley request came in, uh, that we cities, city manager, our ci- city uh, council people spent more than two years on this location.
See, it's not like just willy nilly did this shit because whoever's gonna move in here in ten years is gonna be mad that he can't build a pool. That's not, that's again, the audacity of him saying that is crazy.
Uh, it was, there were many problems regarding, uh, drainage, regarding closeness to, uh, the, uh, other, uh, you know, the other, uh, people that already lived there. The, the engine request was for many more lots and, and by the way, this wasn't a political thing. There was nothing political involved in that. I, I don't know what, how the, the owner brought that forward.
Yeah, bullshit.
I strongly, uh, disagree with, with that. One thing I wanted to, well, let me go ahead and explain Oak Alley. Uh, because there was, there were so many concerns and you see, uh, tonight, many concerns too.
No, they are at the limit of that same easement, but it's only measuring fifteen feet because that furthest east ten feet was deeded over to the Tanglewood subdivision.
Okay, all right. Well, anyway. What I'm concerned about is that if this is approved, we're probably gonna see a bunch more, uh, people come forward.
Yep.
And request this, the same, uh, same easement. It appears to me that, I know they want this shape that they've come up with, but it appears to me that there, there's a fair amount of area that's outside the twenty five foot.
Most of it is outside the twenty five foot variance.
Area that they could go to the south of where they're proposing this and still have a fair sized pool.
So he's saying move it up a little bit where there's more room because the way the angle is, and they don't want to do that because they want a sport court, which is what my researcher told me they didn't put in there. So they didn't tell you that. They wanted a sport court on that side. And so they don't want to move the pool. But they could move the pool and get a bigger pool, but they don't want to do that.
So my, my, I'm very much against this. You saw that there are ten properties that are against this. And, uh, you know, I'm sure when they.
So what he's saying is the other side of the property, they're all against it. So even in this side, this, the new subdivision is for it because they went to the neighbors and they asked them. Looks like they only got like three letters signed, but he's saying the other side, we are all opposed to this. So too bad, bro.
Bought their house. They knew that this, this line, line was there. It's, it's, it's clearly marked on, on all of the, uh, documents. I think, uh, you know, just because they have five children, to me, isn't a reason. Okay, I'm out of time. But.
You can finish. If you need another minute, you can finish.
Okay.
Yeah, why does he only get two minutes and they get like thirty?
Well, I can tell you that two other council members, the, the mayor, then Mayor Newton and Mayor Portem Hui both agree with me that this, uh, this easement should not be eliminated.
Okay. And then apparently the president of the Tanglewood HOA comes up at thirty six ten.
When you're through speaking, if you would fill one of those cards out at the back and then give it to the gentleman over here.
Can I just say this though? HOA presidents can kiss everybody's ass. I don't care if they're against these influencers. If you're a president of HOA, you're a douche.
My left. We have to. My name is Mark Godfritzsen, seven, three, two, one, Treonon Court. I'm the president of the homeowners association for the Tanglewood subdivision. One thing that I will note, you mentioned the ten that have, uh, that have sent in letters. There are twelve lots in the Tanglewood subdivision. All twelve are opposed to this. And if they need to send in letters, we can get everybody to send in a letter. That's, that's not a.
Add my letter to that. These bitches shouldn't get a pool because they exploit children.
You. Just a little, little bit.
You imagine, I wish they had a camera on her during this so that she could just see her scowling, scathing death glare to these guys. You know I'm on Instagram.
History on this, uh, Mr. Dodson, I think laid it out relatively well. There was a lot of discussion. Uh, when that twenty five foot easement was, was approved. Why? Why was there a request for that? Why did we work with Burke Collins? Um, in, uh, in setting that up. Well, one of the unique natures of the, of our subdivision is that it runs right. The boundary runs right along that wall and the road, most of the way runs right along that wall as well. So what basically the, the plot plan put the backyards facing the front yards in Treonon Court. And so the idea was, that's not normal. If you did sort of normal plans, you don't have backyards facing front yards. But in this case, we do. And so there's a lot of concern about noise, about privacy. And so that easement also is designed to have trees put in there so that we're not just looking into everybody's backyard when they're swimming and, and so on and so forth. We worried about noise and in fact, noise is an issue in the, uh, in the subdivision.
Five boys, all play sports, feral, with parents who don't care about them.
Yeah.
That's a recipe for noise disaster.
There's many times that I and others have been walking down our road and there are parties going on in the backyards of homes in Oak Alley. And music's blaring out of those, uh, out of those pools.
Yep.
We can see the partiers there in spite of the fact that that wall is, you know, relatively high and we're down. Most of these houses have been out, built up in such a way that you can actually see right over that wall.
Boom.
And so it is, it's a, it's a very difficult thing. The, uh, it was, it was, there was some emotion at the time. Let's, let's, let's admit it. People didn't really like the plan. And Burke Collins was required by the planning and zoning commission to change his plan significantly. And to put in a, uh, and to, and to put that easement in. You know, I, I have some empathy for the, uh, for the homeowner here, but it, there is a little bit of due diligence that needs to be done when you buy a property.
Oh.
The title insurance that they would have read, they would have highlighted the, uh, that the easement was there.
Mm-hmm. And he's a lawyer. Don't forget he's a lawyer.
If they had done any due diligence and looked at the plat, they would have seen the easement. And if that doesn't work for them.
Don't buy the house.
Another house.
Boom. That's what I said. That's what I said.
That's really the position that we would take is that.
Okay, thirty nine forty seven Barbara steps up. Let's see. Barbara comes on up.
Feeling and, and I'll just, I'll leave it at that. We have one other homeowner that, uh, is the neighbor right across the wall there, who I think would also like to say a word.
Barbara, let's go Barbara. I'm on your side, Barbara.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
So Barbara, the homeowner who was across the other side, Rabel's wall, very concerned. Let's hear what Barbara has to say.
But, uh, cause you, you do have my letter there. Uh, I am the homeowner that, um.
Has to watch these feral boys punch each other all day.
Barbara Bradshaw.
Okay.
Uh, seventy three sixteen Treonon Court.
Thank you.
And, uh, I'm the homeowner that's directly impacted. And I'm also, I'm one of the twelve homeowners in the neighborhood.
Okay, I, I'm sorry, Ms. Bradshaw, can you speak into the mind just for recording purposes?
Yes, but if you'll look at.
I bet you Barbara has a pool.
My property and how it is affected, it's been affected not just by lot fourteen, but by the other homeowner who has, who takes, I'm affected by two of the Oak Alley homes. And
NIMBYs.
Whereas there is a buffer zone for a large number of our homes. In my case, the wall is all there is. There isn't another fifteen feet deeded or twenty five feet deeded or the, or the street.
Microphone bitch.
As a buffer. My home directly is impacted.
Yeah.
And so that's my.
I would be at these meetings just to snark because I would be that way. And I, I have friends that would be there with me.
Big concern, um, I have a lot of empathy for those little five.
No you don't.
Uh, boys. I want them to have a pool. I really do. I'm not against that at all. I'm so grateful to have neighbors now and not construction, which we've had for probably three years. Um, I have eleven grandchildren, so I've got a lot of empathy for that, for activity.
You don't have to say this stuff. Just say, we don't like this bitch.
Levels, et cetera. Um, but Mark mentioned noise being an issue and, uh, it is an issue. I mean, I can hear phone, I can hear whole conversations.
Really? Barbara seems to know some stuff about this influence. Be careful influencers. You never know who's listening and what kind of tea they have on you. I just need you to know that. Barbara, reach out. I'd like to hear some of those things that you might have picked up.
And as it is now, um, with the boys, they love to play ball. So I get balls.
Barbara, phrasing.
In my driveway, on a regular basis.
Phrasing.
Hockey pucks, which is all fine. That's, that's.
Doesn't sound like it's fine though.
Okay, but if, if, if now we're talking about putting in a pool and, and that's added to it, I do have some concern.
Yeah.
Um, I do have a part of my house that is close. It's an attached casita that's used. So it's not just my garages that are impacted or my driveway.
The garages.
It is our actual living space. And I had one other thing. Yes, here's what I wanted to say. Twenty five feet is a long way to me. But now you're asking, being, I'm being asked to bring that down to a ten foot buffer. That's, that's quite a bit of difference. So I would hope that there was a way that the pool can go in just within the twenty five foot buffer.
Yeah, just follow the rules. That's what people are asking you to do.
And I think that's reasonable. And surely the builder who built this home new, most of the homes that have gone in have pools that go in at the same time as they move in. And so the builder had to know what the limitations were.
Or there would have been a pool.
On, on putting a pool there. So you know, that's, I don't know. That's what I have to say. Questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Bradshaw, very much.
Thanks.
Additionally not mentioned, when Brooke and Ryan work out of their detached garage at six AM, they blare music for the whole neighborhood and probably for Barbara to hear. So there you go. Brooke and Ryan come back at forty four ten.
To come back and respond to, uh, the comments.
I love this stuff. Babe, come on up here. We need you to cry.
Sure, and we respect their opinions. I'll start with the.
No, you don't. Damn liar. So they come up from forty four minutes to one hour and twenty three. So they're up here for another thirty eight minutes? Holy shit. Why they get so much time?
Last point, the casita point. Ben, if you could pull up the Google Earth view of our presentation.
Uh, you can control it now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I think this is Mrs. Bradshaw's house here.
So this is like, obviously before the Google took a picture of it. Again, why are you buying such tiny lots when you have millions of dollars? Are you okay? So what she's saying is that like their garage is probably here and it spews music over to here. Barbara's living, Barbara's got some money. What's up, Barbara? Anyway, I get it.
Right here. The pool would be here.
So.
And that is well over forty feet away from any structure. In fact, there's numerous, there's houses across, there's houses nearby. It's unclear how our noise is any different than their neighbor's noise. Secondly, our driveway is here. And the noise, the nuisance referenced by a couple of individuals here, those are children laughing and playing ball.
Which I think is fine, but some people don't. You gotta respect that. Although I understand the rule, you, 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 you cannot expect a child free world. I get that. I understand that. Some don't. It's just the way it is, man.
Whether a pool's there or not, I hope my boys will be on their bikes laughing, playing hockey.
Oh, they will be. And there's not gonna be a pool. So you know what they're gonna do? They're gonna put the little sport court back there and like, boys, you make as much noise as you can. I want Barbara to feel the noise. You know it.
Full of their neighbors. Of course, we're very sorry. We continually hit balls over in your yard. We're gonna try to work on that. Maybe they need to work on their shots.
Shut up. Put up, put up a net.
But this is laughter of children. I find it telling that the first individual who spoke that's apparently crafted the deal was unaware that ten feet was deeded over to the other subdivision. And that's a dramatic effect on us because again, we are the only house.
Again, none of the arguments are salient, just because all you have to do is be like, you shouldn't have bought the house. All this information was given to you, was publicly available, was probably presented to you. And the fact that you still bought it knowing all these things, oh well, like it's just, it's such a waste of people's time.
Singled out. I think that.
Singled out.
Larger point here is.
We aren't partiers. We're lame and go to bed at nine. Forty seven nineteen. You aren't gonna get more requests. And if you do, forty seven nineteen, let's go there.
Simple decision that there is a unique hardship. It's not gonna impact anyone else. You're not gonna get more requests. Everybody else has a pool and if everyone comes in.
No, no. If you make a variance here, a major variance, everybody's gonna want to do something. Not everybody, but some people will and they're gonna have to do that. They're gonna ruin the whole plan. Sorry, man. A major variance is a big deal, especially in such a tight knit community when your neighbor is literally feet from your backyard. I wasn't the impression until I saw the picture that there was like a fence and then a street, but it's not. Literally the yards are attached, basically, except for a, a barrier. So no, man, no.
Like they did with the fence deal, I think you mentioned the other day, the.
Like they did with the fence deal, I think you mentioned the other day. The answer is this is unique hardship for one family.
Shut up. It's not a hardship. You just can't have a pool. Forty-eight, fifty-nine. Uh, is there any other place on the property to put the pool? Ryan lies and says, no. Then Brooke comes on and says, well, actually there was, but it wasn't big enough for us. Okay.
No, is there any other place on that, on your property that you, that your designer has looked at putting that pool?
There's no other place. There's, so there's an oak?
There is a response to that. So there was
Don't lie liar.
It's like a small pool that we found out after the fact was designed by the same pool.
Why are you laughing about it? So there was a pool you could have put
Company that now has a new pool. The feedback that we got almost unanimously from people is that it wasn't even a standard size pool.
Oh no. Not a standard size pool. Oh my God. Are you gonna be okay?
So it really does prohibit us from building a standard size pool to the point where the pool would be pushed up onto our porch and even still
No.
Wouldn't be as even a standard size pool.
Yeah, no, yeah. Shut up.
Then it begs the question, you know, would you even put, could you put the pool on the back side around the, the house? I, I don't, I don't think so.
Well, there's, you'd have to cut down a number of oak trees if you want to do that, which we love those oak trees.
There's options.
It, I don't think, cause the easement still goes twenty-five feet in our house, if you recall, is angled. So that really is the best place for it. With regards to that pool, you know, uh, it's like, it's like here.
Fifty-two, fifty-eight. Apparently they ask our question.
Restrictions, just to understand that is this a, a precedent across Colleyville? And if, you know, it was, we were ready to look at those cases, but if it's, if it's a kind of single targeted property, that's where, why we're here today to come up and
They keep saying they're targeted. No, you're not targeted, man. You didn't own it.
Kind of plead our case and hope that we can get back to not necessarily almost like a, a opinion about it when it comes to one property, but you know, kind of go back to those facts.
All right. I, I, oh my gosh. So let me just, so apparently she's asked a question here. Hold on.
Along with Commissioner Savoy, when you're, when you had your pool designed, was your, was your engineer aware of this easement?
Why are there lights in there like that?
Yes, sir. Yes. The engineer was. So in fact, when we, well, let me just tell you what we, what our experience was.
No, that's known. And then apparently he goes on to give their whole life story that nobody asked for. They said they missed the easements and the documents from the survey done. Um, they had already moved and was pregnant, so they couldn't find a different house. Too bad. I mean, so sad. You're still in a mansion. Shut Brooke. And then fifty-four oh five, Brooke admits that it was incredibly hasty decision, her part to buy the house. She hyper fixated and wouldn't take no for an answer. Also said they poured everything they had into it and alone should warrant us a pool. I gotta hear that one. Fifty-four oh five. This is it.
And it was great. This is more space. And, um, like I said, I found the house. I feel truly responsible. We poured a lot of, uh, it was a final kind of, this is the home we're gonna be in and not that that should, you know, want us a pool. Um, and then we
Admits that they didn't have a broker, a real station when they bought the house. That's okay. So they were saving dollars. So cutting corners cost them a huge amount of time and money. They asked why they can't just reconfigure to stay within the easement and they basically, it's too small. Uh, well, there's something I want to get to here. Ryan rudely cuts off the commissioner when she says she's in the middle of speaking, goes on to say, fine. So one oh one, twenty-one. Here we go. The only people at this meeting are the people opposed to their pool.
Have a pool and I understand you're wanting the pool for your children and, you know, yes, it's hot in Texas, as you said, and um, family bonding and playtime and all that is definitely important to a young family like yours. I, I was just trying to see if we could get, if we could bring it into compliance some way. So you wouldn't have
So if you see Vance here, um, commissioner, that's where the pool would start. This is where it starts. This is where it would could, could effectively start if you respect easement. So it, it, it
Anyway, cuts her off. The commissioner says the builder should have built a smaller house and this is the real problem. Ryan says unrespectfully, no. Because the point of development was bigger homes. Commissioner responds, I think he focuses, focused on bigger lots, not necessarily sixty-five hundred square foot house. Holy shit. That's a big ass house. The lady commissioner respectfully chews them out and says, you have to look at the bigger picture. AK, it's not about you. It's, there's plenty of other people who's still impacted by the decision. Uh, commissioner's going on to say, you can't guarantee that nobody else will come forward and demand a variance on their easement. He's surprised they didn't catch it in the purchasing process. The pool can definitely be made smaller. The commission needs to do right by all citizens of the town. Not just one person. It's about making memories. The size of the pool should matter. Burn. More Brooke bimbo babble. What's the right thing to do? A lot of stuttering because she doesn't have her chat GPT script. One fifteen, Brooke says, this was our dream house. We put everything into it. The meeting isn't even over yet and this dream house is dead in the water to her. She's over it and will move on within the next year. Lady commissioner says, I know it's hard for you to believe, but this does set a precedent. The easement is there for the other lots selfish much? So one twenty-one makes a rude comment. I mean, what state are we even in? And then rolls her eyes. Okay. This is the one I saw. One twenty-one, twenty. This is awesome. This is influencer culture. This is a rich ass person who is not going to be told what she can and cannot do. Listen to this.
Just don't want it to happen.
But
They're not actually impacting.
It's like if we looked at the facts of it, like we're asking everyone here to do the facts of like, if you actually considered zoning and the ability to have a pool here, you can have one and it, you can, and we're safe.
Apparently you can't though.
It's safe. It's on our property. It's on our property.
The twelve people that are impacted just have a theoretical objection. It doesn't affect the noise. It doesn't affect their sightline.
What state are we at? Stupid asshole. Okay. That's what got me. She's like, oh my God, you guys, I want a pool though, because we are better than you. People don't want us to have our pool because they just don't want it. Big, big law lawyer here. Tango with HOA president is called up again. He says, young kids turn into teenagers who have parties in their backyard when their parents are out of town. They can, can reconfigure the compliance and still have a pool and the precedent Tango development HOA refutes their point of sightline. So there's an argument he makes in here. He says, we want it there because when we're cooking dinner and making stuff, we want to be able to see our kids through the kitchen window. Um, no. Immediately. No. 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 If you're not outside with your children while they're swimming, you are failing your children. They're going to possibly die. So the guy rightly says, hey, you should be watching your kids at one twenty, twenty-five, fifty-two.
My five children grew up in our yard and, uh, and are adults now and have their own children. So I understand that. Do I believe that, you know, based what I've seen on the lot, I'm looking at these pictures right here and I look to the south. Do I believe that something could be configured so that they could have a pool? I do believe that
It's not big enough for them.
They could. I'm not saying they shouldn't have a pool. I think they can configure and be, and be compliant. And, uh, and they can continue to have that. But I think that, uh, that it would be very, a very dangerous precedent to make an exception here when it's most likely possible that you could configure something. And by the way, on the question of sightlines, we have a pool. We've had the kids in our pool. And I just have to tell you that if you are a responsible parent, you don't watch sightlines from the kitchen.
Yep.
You're out there with the kids.
Boom.
A child can drown very, very quickly in a pool.
And again, the Emily Kaiser thing happened before this meeting and that's
That's not the consideration.
That's damn. Damn. So here is the committee decision, one twenty-eight, forty. Let's get to it because it's gonna be juicy.
If that pool be, do we, is there an order instead? There has to be the specific dimensions around that pool?
I don't think so. It's just meeting building code. So a lot of it's just going to be the way it's constructed.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? If not, I will, um, ask for a motion.
Mm-hmm. Here we go, everybody.
I move the case number ZC twenty-five dash zero two six be denied.
Denied.
That motion.
Seconded.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Remley and a second by Commissioner Groves to deny case ZC two-five dash zero two six. And so we'll take a vote. This is to deny. Commissioner Groves.
Aye.
Commissioner
Denied.
Aye.
Denied.
Commissioner Savoy.
Nay.
Not denied.
Commissioner Obanabo.
Nay.
Nay.
Commissioner Remley.
Aye.
Commissioner Arnold.
Aye.
Commissioner Bevah votes aye and the case is denied by a vote.
Oh, snap. Brooke Raybold, suck on that one time.
Two.
Okay. So that's it. That's the demotion. After they were done with the vote on their issue, the meeting continued and three of the boys were sent to the front seats, likely by mom and dad, where they sat for most of the rest of the meeting. Thought to be attacked by the parents. Look at the face of the children who are denying to have Billy to have a pool. No, you just can't have a smaller pool. They can still have a pool. In general throughout the meeting, Brooke and Ryan were constantly talking over each other and they could tell they were getting frustrated with each other. They also kept rudely talking over the commissioners and not directly answering their questions. At the end of the day, they were standing there with their upset faces because someone was telling them no for the first time in their lives. It was chef's kiss. Gold. Also, none of their pool rendering show offense and or net, and they never once talked about putting one in. So there you go. So that is Brooke Raybold, everybody. Um, and this is the post she made after. This is what she said with her happy face because she's trying to put on a happy face. The zoning committee voted us down five-two. I guess I'm a little sick about it and a little speechless. The audacity, do they not know I have following on Instagram? That feeling of not belonging somewhere has crept in going through such a big move and having a baby like this moment is waking me up to the vastness of the change we just experienced. Like where do I even live? I don't know. In hell. Move somewhere else dumbass. It's almost like the people here don't understand. On the contrary, right? Brooke Raybold. It's almost like you don't understand rules and variances and shit. Um, you know, the feeling being completely misunderstood and up against something that feels impossible to change. Do I belong here? No, you should move. Um, your neighbors would thank you. What just happened? I'm kind of pondering that. It's not just about the pool. I would, it was, it awakened something else in me. She was awakened by this, like Mordor and the, the raging fires of Mordor's ass. Uh, I feel a bit defeated, not trying to be dramatic, but this just, this, but just this hope for this house, mad at myself. Wanting to have created this family compound, a compound on a postage stamp lot. Okay. Wondering if we're in the right spot, hoping a wand will flicker and something will change over a pool. But you know me, I won't stop, kind of relentless. We still have the city council to talk to and hopefully they'll hear our case. And I guess not just about a pool. It's more than that. What's, no, it's not. Stop being an idiot. Something that feels unjust, but I'm a problem solver. I think this is my gift. And then she made like a Chipotle, um, sport court, like right within the landscape easement. There you go. So she's talking about sport court. You know what's crazy? I'm pretty sure they were allowed sport courts within twenty-five percent landscape easement. Tell me I'm not crazy for thinking it's weird. But you can't, you can't, you can't have a pool, but you can have a sport court right up against the wall. PS, you can't, my, my person says. A couple of posts from Friday after the meeting, persistence doesn't make you spoiled or entitled. You are super spoiled and entitled. F right off. It means you've learned to hold division longer than most people can handle the discomfort of not having it yet. It's, this is a pool lady. This isn't a human's right violation. F right off. Anyway, Brooke Raybold, suck on that a one time. You deserve it. You child exploiting asshole. Welcome to the show. I hope you enjoyed it. And I hope those brothers who are comedians reach out. I'd love to have a conversation. Brooke, no one likes you. I just, and I don't even know you. I, I don't even know you and I know nobody likes you. It's great. It's great when, uh, there is comeuppance for people who are so entitled to live this life and they're just like, uh, I hope you lost a lot of fans over this too, because you deserved it. And Brooke, I'm sure this is the last time we heard about you on this channel because this is fun. This was great. I know a lot of you might find it boring, but I found that very satisfying. I appreciate it. Everybody, please take a deep breath. Take it in. Brooke Raybold. Dumbass. Build a smaller pool, wanker. No, because it needs to be rich looking, right? Needs to be very big and vast because they need to show off their wealth and be like, look, it's for the content. I'm surprised you didn't say that. Look, we need to make content. But you gave me some content, Brooke Raybold, so I appreciate you for that. You and your dumbass husband. Thanks for being here, everybody. Appreciate you. I hope you have an amazing day. You look good in those pants. And I'll see you when I see you.